Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of June 14th, 2017. As we start all meetings, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and is also being broadcast live, so keep that in mind. I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence and in this moment of silence, please keep in your thoughts Gail Fontaine, who was a para here at Whitman Hansen at the high school that passed away recently. You please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. An entertaining motion to approve the minutes of May 22nd, 2017.
So moved.
Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Before Mara Burt gives us her student advisory, I'd like to remind everyone, this is the last meeting for Ellen Starkdale and John Quealy. I'd like to thank them both for their years of service to Whitman Hansen Regional School District. They've both done well in this district and were very, very well respected, so I'd like to thank them and give them a hand for their years of service. Okay. Student advisor, Mara Burt.
So on Tuesday, May 23rd, 2017, in the high school café, the 18th Annual Family Science Fun Night was held. The high school advanced placement science students hosted an evening of science experimentation. Teams of AP science students had research and prepared hands-on science activities geared to grade K through 5 students. We will miss dearly the class of 2017 as they leave us and head off into the world. All senior events, including the final exams, prom, senior banquet, scholarship night, senior cookout, and graduation flew by with laughs and tears. The Quanis MVP Night was also held to appreciate the outstanding student and athlete leaders within the school. While it was humbling to recognize these amazing young men and women, it was even more humbling to think of the others who lead by the little things they do every day. In women's middle school, the end-of-the-year activities are underway and 186 8th grade students and staff just returned from the annual trip to New York and Philly this past Friday. A true highlight was being able to view one of the 15 handwritten bills of rights that are on Lona, the National Constitution Center. Also, the boat ride to both Ellis and Liberty Island are all the streets, as well as the Broadway show School of Rock. This week, there will be both morning and award ceremonies by grade, as well as field days.
Anyone have any questions? Ms. Burt? Great job. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, for the sake of getting some people in and out, I'm going to take a few things out of order. Tonight, we have with us Dr. David Belcher. He's from Quincy Pediatrics. He is going to be our new school physician. We have to vote on this, so I'd like to present a warm welcome to Dr. Belcher. I would entertain a motion to appoint Dr. Belcher as our school physician.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
If anybody has any questions, I see my role as being somewhat flexible, because needs of the school, I'm often, you know, figure out what I do and to extend what I do in my direction. I look forward to working with the staff.
Thank you.
And Dr. Belcher will be meeting next Tuesday morning with our school nurses so that they can get to know him and ask him any questions.
Eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock, and it'll be in this building on the second floor. So we'll, I met with them yesterday, John Quealy and I did, and they're looking forward to meeting you.
Thank you very much.
Great, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Also, we need, we have the turf field contracts have come in, and Ernie Sandlin is here. We have to vote to appoint, to give the contract to a certain vendor. Ernie, if you'd like to come up.
In your packet, there's a letter from Birchwood. It's on the front.
I guess it's the four.
Yeah, it's here. This is it. Do you have it? Birchwood Design Group.
This is from the facilities.
It's got a little birch tree on the front.
I got, I got him.
I have a duplicate, so here's another one.
No. You can leave it, because I don't think I have.
Um, I don't think I do, but I'm trying to open my packet right now.
You may have one.
I might have it on my screen here.
I think it was flat in your document, maybe. I don't know.
Oh, here it is.
There it is. She should have had it. Yeah, I think everyone had it.
Okay.
It was a handout tonight.
Everybody got one?
It's not really in the packet. You won't find it in the packet.
Thank you.
So there's an extra one right here. Oh, you got one?
Yeah, he's got it.
Okay. Go ahead, Ernie.
So on May 30th, at 1:00, we opened up the bids upstairs in central office. It was an open, open meeting, open bid. We had five actual vendors that responded. Out of the five, only three were actually compliant with the bid specifications. And so, they all gave us samples of the turf, and then we had Birchwood review and evaluate all of the bids that came in, the turf, and also to make sure that they were compliant with the actual bid specifications.
Okay, so the process that we went through putting this out to bid is, we looked at a bunch of fields that are out there, and we came up with what we thought was probably myself, Bob Rogers, Matt Carew, and Jeff Simonak was involved with it. And we found that there was a certain type of field we wanted to replace this field with. And we put the specifications together. In that process, we learned quite a bit. But we learned that through this whole process, there's a lot of different vendors out there that want to sell you a whole bunch of different turf fields. So that's why we came up with the idea that once we put the specification together, we'd have an engineer look at it, which he did. He did make some, he tweaked our specification a little bit, and then we had three main turf field manufacturers that we put in the specification. So when you look at the document from Birch, Birchwood Design Group, Northeast Turf appears to be, looks to be the lowest bid, but they don't qualify in the specification. The next company, which is Turf Field USA, is actually the field that we have out on, exist in turf field now. And what we did, once we got into this whole process, we called AI3, who's doing a lot of fields, doing a lot of buildings in Massachusetts, and we asked them who they use for the engineer when they design, and they came up with Birchwood. We contacted them, and it's been actually very good. Christine and I have been on the phone with this gentleman, emails, and I think it's a very good specification, and the final product would be excellent. We did request $425,000 from both towns. We did get the $425. If you'll notice, on the second line, field turf bid is 362,453. There are some alternates that we did put in the specification that we did not accept at this time, because our fear down the road, once this project starts, we want to make sure, when we pull back that carpet, whatever's under there is proper and we'll be able to use it for drainage. Until that time comes, then we'll look at the alternates in the future, once we know everything's going to go the right way. So, it's been an interesting voyage, but we, the final product, and that's what I look at, the final product will be something we'll be all proud of, and it'll still continue to get a lot of use.
Anyone? Fred?
Just to add that we did go over this a little bit more extensively in our facility subcommittee meeting, and we were looking at the fact that it comes with an eight-year warranty, with a 10-year life expectancy, which is pretty much what we had originally. They have improved the field, so perhaps with proper maintenance, we could get a little bit more time out of it. And we did unanimously recommend to approve Field Turf USA as the awarded contract.
I entertain a motion to accept Field Turf USA at 362,453.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah. How does this compare to the allocation that we got? This was a capital submission to the town.
We got $425.
We got $425, so we're about 120, no, 60. That's the math there.
But that, Kevin, what's going to happen, we do have some alternates that we'll, we'll accept after we know everything scope aesthetic with what's going on underneath that field. Once we start to pull that field back, the old field, drainage, making sure drainage pop is, is proper. And then some of the alternates that we would like to do would be a logo of, the logo in the center, shading of the numbers, and also a maintenance contract down the road. What we've asked for in one of the alternates is, how much would it cost us to maintain the field for eight, the eight years of the warranty? So we have all those numbers, and even if we accept all those, we'll still be under the $425, but we're really cautious, because we want to just make sure, when they pull that carpet back, everything's good. All right?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I can perhaps elaborate, because we did take some notes. The three alternates fall, went through, would total 44,375. So even if we did need to do some drainage work, we could hopefully still be within what we had anticipated.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ernie.
Thank you.
And thank you, Christine. I know these bids are work out at times. Okay, superintendent's report. We'll get back on track.
Thank you. We have a number of things to wrap up here at the end of the school year. The other day, we were reflecting on the variety of things that happened during the school year. They can be as recent as the smell in the elevator at the Hansen Middle School, or as dramatic as the gas problem that we had at Whitman Middle School. Back in the fall, we had the Hansen police after some folks, and that required some management on our part. So it's been a very busy year. Some of you may remember back to the clown sightings. So as we were reflecting on that, folks were saying, and that all happened this year? And it did. For the past two years, since Dr. Dillon has been with us, he has been working on a comprehensive emergency management plan. When we reflected on the events from this year, we became ever more certain as to why those things needed to happen. Fortunately, we didn't have to evacuate the Whitman Middle School, but it was getting close, and our first responders and the gas company got in there and took care of it. But things do happen. So I've asked Pat to report for us this evening on the progress that he and his task force have made in the past two years, and what's going to happen next.
Yep. So, thanks. So we, we currently have 13 people on the district safety and security committee, whoever reviewed the plan and provided individual feedback. So we're incorporating that feedback with the expectation that the version one of the scent will be to the superintendent by the end of the month. We'll then subsequently take parts of the summer to just run that by the chiefs and first responders to get their feedback. One of the outcomes of that will be, in August, we'll present a 2017, 2018 training plan that kind of lays out what we'd like to accomplish in terms of training the staff and the students. We've gotten a lot of feedback from stakeholders, especially the first responders, that, you know, they're basically asking us to elevate our readiness for various events. So one such example, which takes a whole lot of planning, is an evacuation, a relocation, and a reunification of a school. So one of the goals next year will be to practice that evolution at one of the schools. Won't happen until the springtime, but that's an example of what will be on that training plan.
So it's been, been a lot of work. His committee's just been excellent at reviewing this, providing feedback, doing that type of thing. So we wanted you all to hear where that is, and you'll be hearing a lot more about that as we begin the next school year. The other piece that we've been very involved in is beginning the transition planning. And within the last two weeks, Dr. Dillon and I, along with various other administrators, have met with the faculty at McQuan Elementary School, and also as recently as yesterday, at the Indian Head School, for the purpose of talking about transitions, answering questions, seeing what we need to be doing in terms of the planning. We've also been working very closely with our WHA representatives as well. So I've asked Pat, with his background in strategic planning, both through the military and in the private sector, and now in schools, to be really the head in leading up that transition. So if he could give you, he's going to give you just a brief summary of where we are this evening and where we see that going in the future.
Yes. So, so there's four things that really have happened so far. Again, we identified the leadership team that will oversee Indian Head and McQuan next year during normal operations. Kyle Riley will be responsible for the transition of the preschool and any of the special ed programs that move from McQuan. Bill Trantor will be responsible for the 5th grade moving into Hansen Middle. And then Beth Wilcox will oversee the transition of the remaining grades into the Indian Head School. Again, we established the leadership team that will do the day-to-day stuff next year, so that was the first thing. After receiving a whole set of, number of feedback, one of the great suggestions that came up, we're going to establish a steering committee with about eight to 10 stakeholder representatives that will be providing guidance to myself and the other folks as we do this transition, because it really impacts three separate schools. So that's, that's, that committee, the names have been vetted, and we have an idea of who we'd like to, we now need to reach out and finalize that. As Dr. Whitner indicated, we had question-and-answer sessions with the McQuan and the Indian Head staff, which I think those went well. And then this summer, during the school break, the kids aren't in session, we'll start to meet those leaders that I mentioned, who are responsible for the various portions of the transition. We'll meet and start to do the detailed planning process. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
I think we've made good progress. I think people feel comfortable that if they do have questions, to bring them forward. We've asked people to remain calm. This has happened many times before. We didn't get to this building by just evaporating and jumping back in here and starting over. We had to move out of the old building. That, people survived. We were able to do that. The whole school closed. We expanded Conley and Duval. We rechanged the configuration of Indian Head a number of years ago. So there is precedent, and as I said, we're working with the association as well. So we will be giving you regular reports at our meetings, but if things happen in between, we'll certainly let you know. Also, want to recognize that Kyle Riley is here with us this evening. I think his goals are already set for the upcoming school year, because he's walking into a lot of transition, but we're excited to be working with him as well. Appreciate him being here. So that's where we are, and Pat, thank you for your report. Mike?
Are we thinking this summer, come up with, are we going to have a construction cost price, bathrooms, fee?
Absolutely, we're going to need to know that, Mike, because they're going to be reworkings. We also need to also look at just the cost of moving, number of different things we're going to need to be looking at. We are hoping that by the time school starts, that we'll have a lot of, as many things in place as you can at that point in time, that will alleviate people's anxiety, but also will allow us to move forward and give us a sense of what, you know, just the cost and the amount of work are involved. Are there any other questions? Okay, thanks. I want to reiterate Chair Hayes's thanks to Ellen and John for the work that they've done. They're child-centered educators, and I've asked them to report this evening on what we're offering for our students this summer. And Ellen, you first, I guess. As you know, if you drive up to Whitman Hansen Regional High School, shortly after school is out for the school year, it looks like we're in session. This building is used. It creates a lot of challenges to our cleaning in the summer, but I think folks can feel very comfortable that this resource is well-used. Ellen, what have we got this summer?
So I'm going to report on the general kind of summer camp activities that are listed. This is a two-page graph of the programs that go on at Whitman Hansen, with multiple weeks and dates and times, and kudos to Ernie for his group to try to work around the schedule. But we do have some wonderful programs offsite. This year again, we have a program for our students in Whitman at the Camp Con, we call it Camp Conley. It's at the Conley School. They kind of took a break a year, but it's a terrific program where kids do some enrichment activities, remedial activities, and it's a project-based program for our students in both Duval and Conley. We also have middle schools. George runs the Fuel Up Play 6D program, which is, Kevin knows, it's very highly regarded, and the students from 4th grade up may join that program, so we have some overlap there. And at Hansen Middle, we have a PE camp that runs youth cheer. We have, the YMCA is obviously there. At the high school, we have everything from the high school athletics to the Comprehensive Medical Teaching Institute for people to learn how to be EMTs, and that is held at the evening. So it's open at 7:30 in the morning, I think, and the high school closes. And then some of the other grant programs that are up here, Maureen Leonard, who I think you, we've had here before, does a beautiful program in the summer, a summer enrichment program. And then we basically have my granddaughter's favorite, which is the science camp with John Rosen. And I'll bring her back this, this July, I think it's the 24th, her birthday's the 28th, and John always celebrates her birthday, so we're coming back. And then the other programs, we do have, North River has some rental, and I can pass it on to John, because he takes that part of the program from me.
Sure. So in special education, we have a number of kids who attend academic programs over the summer, and these are parts of their IEP. So the, their special ed team at their buildings determines that the students, the severity of their needs are such that they need to come to school during the summer to make sure that they don't move backwards, and they're in good shape to start the year in September. So for this year, it's going to look very much like it did last year. At McQuan, we're going to have our preschool program. At the high school here, we have our kindergarten through 5th grade programs, and we also have high school, extended school year for the programs that run here. Hansen Middle has programs, including their two sub-separate programs, as well as a tutoring program. And at Whitman Middle School, we also have a tutoring program as well. So several of the buildings in the district are used for ESY. Everything starts on July 10th. Most programs run through August 3rd. We do have a handful of students who run through August 10th. And services range from everything up from maybe one to two hours of tutoring a week, up to full 16-hour, four- and five-week programs for our most needy students. Right now, we have 57 staff members, including teachers, paraprofessionals, various therapies, speech, OT, PT, nurse. So we have a wide range of folks working the summer. And in total, as of today, 57 staff members. If there's any questions, I can certainly answer them.
Yeah, John, are these programs, are these an extension of the services these kids are receiving, or are these optional programs that people are just availing themselves of?
We offer it, in IEP meetings, the team determines that this is a need of the student, so we offer it to the student, and it's put on the IEP. Most of our students do access it, but we do have students who choose not to access it, and that's parents' choice.
All right. Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you both.
Thank you. And one of our programs that has just come online as well is, we'll also offer tutoring services for our English language learners. We're very fortunate that a grant we have in conjunction with North River Collaborative had some money left over for tutoring, and our ESL teacher at the Whitman Middle School will be offering tutoring services, and that flyer is just going out now. So very comprehensive programs and lots of opportunities for our students. So thank you both for your report. Appreciate it. Next, we're going to talk about virtualization. If you recall, two years ago, in May of 2015, taxpayers in Whitman Hansen voted to support and fund virtualization in the Whitman Hansen Regional School District. This has been a very intensive project, but it has moved forward, and I've asked Chad to give you an update on where we are today.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to give an update on, this year's been an exciting and very fruitful year on the virtualization front for the deployment that we've been going through this year. We've seen the full extent of the virtualization for the year, ending the school year right now, where we have virtualization fully deployed through all areas of the district. Every school building reaches every student, and to the fullest extent where it not only works with all the students and the staff each day, but also after-hours with staff, utilizing it on their own devices, home devices, things like that, as well as the students started utilizing it even more towards the end of this year. We sent a letter home to the parents notifying them, encouraging them to have the students utilize the virtualization, to have an extended arm of what we have here and what we offer to the students. So a lot of students have been taking advantage of it. We've got a lot of good feedback from students. We've heard from a few students in middle schools, high schools, that are utilizing it after school to get the software programs that they have here, that they want to utilize or write a document or report up, access documents that they have here, and that virtualization gives them that ability to do that. And it gives them the ability to do it no matter where they are, no matter what device they have. So it gives them a great flexibility. And so from here, we're fully deployed with our virtualization, which, which puts us in a very good circumstance, where we're very flexible in the district now. Where, where we've deployed it, we, we have the ability to not only use the virtualization in, on devices like iPads and computers, but now, once our devices that we have, the standalone devices start to fail on us, we can replace them with very cheap devices that cost $200. They're about this size, right here. And there's really nothing to them. The life expectancy on those are five-plus years on them, because they're literally a cellphone in a box that connects to a keyboard and mouse and monitor. So we're in a very good area right now, where our flexibility, we're, we'll be in a hybrid environment where we have some standalone PCs, just a regular PC, where we have a lot of software to utilize for digital photography, video editing programs like that in high school. But then, we have a lot of areas where we just need a PC to get on the internet. We would use a lot of the virtualization, like in the library here, most, all these machines are virtualized, because they utilize software and, and stuff on the internet. And then that gives us now the, the next phase to it, where, you know, if we want something where it's fixed, we use the, the virtualization stations. Or if we want to go mobile, we go into more the Chromebook area, where we'll start seeing a lot of that expanding where we are now. We're at about 1,100 or 1,200 Chromebooks in the district. And where we see it going is, you know, taking a lot of the computer labs, where a fixed computer lab, like they've been since I've been in high school and probably longer than that, where it's just rows of computers, everyone looks forward. Now, we'll probably go into more of a flexible area where there's no computers on tables. You take Chromebooks or mobile devices, maybe an iPad or something, and you have tables that move around. Very flexible area to do curriculum in different configurations with the teachers. So this summer, we'll start kind of working on some of those areas, where we're giving the schools some more flexibility in creating those environments to give the teachers and the students some, some more areas and to kind of enrich some of the curriculum.
Go ahead, Fred.
Do you see us going to possible bring your own device if a student wished to?
With the students opening that op, we get into a little, it gets into a little difficult area, where depending on what they're bringing in for a device. I think that the fashion that we're going now of getting the Chromebooks, I think we're making some really good progress on the model that we have now, is buying Chromebooks for carts and putting those in the classroom. So every classroom will, at some point, get a cart full of Chromebooks, which they'll utilize. When they're done, they put them back in, and they move to the next class, or if they're moving classes. So I think that's the model that I think will work the best for us, because what you have, we best for us. Because what you have when people bring in devices, they're not all the same. There's different things on them, them getting on our network, them not working, who's responsible for them. So, there's a lot of different areas that are very tricky. And then, when people bring them in, you have the have and have-nots of someone can bring it in because they have one, some people don't. So, I think the model that we have now is going to work really well because we're well on our way with that 1,100, 1,200 range of Chromebooks in addition to what we have here, which is the fixed devices and laptops and iPads. So, I think that's probably the best model, that the principals are looking forward to progressing in the years going forward.
Anyone else?
Question whether it's Chad or Ruth. With these Chromebooks and Google, will we be implementing like across the board sometime, some point where all teachers will be utilizing the same type of, because my son, you know, one or two teachers may use certain things, and other teachers don't at this time. Will we be, you know, putting that across the district?
I don't see us being 100% the same thing because people have a variety of different needs and uses. Clearly, Google has amazing opportunities, and we've done a lot of training with Google, but I don't see us going all one way and not the other because things change so fast in technology. I mean, years ago, we were totally PC. We were never going to go with Apple because Apple was having some tough times. Well, we had to sort of change our tune on that when we saw how Apple bounced back. So, Dan, I think that you're going to see us doing a lot of Google things, depending on the curriculum area and what the needs are. So, I don't really see that. Chad, maybe you want to jump in?
Yeah, no, I think, I think you said it exactly. We try to give everyone flexibility and not push certain things on people because different people do things well with the Google stuff. Some people do things well with the Microsoft stuff, or some stick to just web-based programs or software that's on the web that they use in the curriculum. So, I think given the flexibility, I think works really well. And when people see things working well, they'll start utilizing it. So, I think you'll see the good stuff come out, and so I think given the flexibility, I think is really good.
Right. And I think the challenge for us is making sure that we're providing opportunities for training and how to use these devices, how to use these software programs, all these things to improve teaching and learning and student outcomes. That's ultimately the goal. We are working with the curriculum directors that on the opening day of school, when teachers come on the 28th, after we do the morning program, we're going to have two hours of professional development that will be technology-linked to content. And I just got another draft on that this afternoon. Haven't even had a chance to look at that with the directors. But that will offer things such as how to use Google in the classroom, but it also might have something, we belong to Primary Source for, we've talked about that, for History, Social Studies, and things such as, that'll be how do you use their electronic resources to improve teaching and learning? So, I think our commitment is really to making sure the things we have are used to improve teaching and learning.
No, my concern was just basically like, Google's free.
It is.
Microsoft, you have to pay for, not anything I can afford to buy Microsoft products.
So, it's really looking at a variety of things.
Anyone else?
I just want to compliment Chad. He also did a good bit of work with our foreign language curriculum director. And I just spent 30 seconds on describing what you did there with the, essentially a virtual mobile lab that you worked on.
Yeah, well, with Kristin Thomas, we've looked at a few different things. They have a computer lab up here for, Language Lab, for the language in the high school. And we looked at a few different areas, and with going the mobile, we looked at a few different things to take advantage of the mobile. So, what we're going to do is transition her room, her computer lab, the traditional computer lab, into a mobile computer lab for her with laptops in addition to the soft, the language software, which is mobile. And it's all web-based in the cloud, which will allow her students to not only do the work here in the classroom with the laptops, but also utilize it at home as well. So, we're looking forward to taking that initiative on the summer and getting that ready for the students. It's been a transition in the last few years of the old software going into the new, but I think this will be good stuff. In addition to that, we did a lot with this year on Rosetta Stone, which is, I think, a really, a really powerful tool for her to annex, her ability to get languages in the hands of the students. She's been, she did a pilot of about 10 to 15 students with Rosetta Stone where the student has access to the Rosetta Stone program, where they can pick a language or a level of a language that they might not have here in the school. So, someone could take like German, or Russian, or Chinese in there and immerse themselves in it as an independent study, or maybe in, in addition to what she's been doing, maybe in Spanish, there's another level of Spanish in the fourth or fifth level. She's been kind of working on that as a pilot, and we're looking to potentially utilize that into the next level in the coming year or years. And it's such a powerful program that you can literally push that down into the middle in elementary just to get kids a flavor of the language where it's purely based on you looking at something with the mic on and headset, and you listening to what they say, and seeing the picture, and you talk, and it tells you if you did it right, and it corrects you. And it's, it's a really neat program, and she's been getting a lot of good responses from it and feedback from students. So, I think this is something I think that's been a priority for the district.
Absolutely.
It's come up with the foreign language, so I think it'll be a great addition.
That's a good solution. Yep.
Fred?
Just to clarify, when it comes to, say, Microsoft products, if a student is logged in on a virtual machine from their home, they don't need to have Microsoft products because they're using the license that's already existing in the high school.
That's correct.
So, they don't need it on their own machine. They can have it.
You can just use it?
Yeah, they have access to, everything that we have here, they have access to there with, it's not just Microsoft, it's any other software product.
Sure.
The licenses. Yeah, but that's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
It's exactly as if you logged in on a computer here. I'm a firm believer. I've got the app on my iPad. I can access anything from anywhere. And when I work at home, I have double screens, and because of virtualization, I can do two screens. When we had remote access, you couldn't do that. So, every weekend or whenever I'm working at home on something, I give thanks to the Technology Department and to Chad for a very creative solution. I haven't heard a lot of other school districts doing this. It's really a frontrunner, and I think two years down the road, we feel it was a very solid decision. So, thank you. I know it's been, not always been smooth, but clearly, we're in a good place.
You have a great team.
Yep. Thank you.
Anyone else? We good?
Okay.
Okay.
Great. As you know, about a month ago, I presented you with my end-of-the-year goals. You were then given a packet to do my evaluation. It needs to be done in open meeting, and here we are. So, I'll turn it over to Bob.
Okay. I want to thank all of you for getting all of them done. They all came in. And Michelle, as always, thank you for tallying it up and making it easier for me as we moved along. Michelle was partners with me on this, and she did all the work. I did most of the watching. The end of the cycle summative evaluation. Step one was assesses' progress towards goals. In the four, there was five categories. Did not meet, some progress, significant progress, met, or exceeded. The first one was professional practice goal. We had one significant progress, three met, and six succeeded. Student learning goal, we had five met, five exceeded. District improvement goal, we had six met, four exceeded. So, all of that was all good. That was step one. Going to step two was assesses' performance on standards. That was a little different. Said unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. Standard one was instructional leadership. Three were proficient. Seven were exemplary. And for anybody that watches, it means it was 10 school committee members that did this evaluation. Standard two was management and operations. Six were proficient. Four were exemplary. Standard three, family and community engagement. Five were proficient. Five were exemplary. The standard four was professional culture. Five were proficient. Five were exemplary. The next was step three, overall summative performance. Again, it was unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. Five were proficient, and five were exemplary. I had 10 people fill out forms, and they all, everybody had some comments. So, I took a couple random ones, and I'm going to read them unless you want me to read all 10 of them. I just took a couple. And I did pick them randomly. One of them said, during the year, it was evident that Dr. Whitman was driven to create the best possible student educational and social environment. Dr. Whitman has done a good job working with budget constraints. She's tried to enhance balanced communication when dealing with a complex, or sensitive, a complex of sensitive issues. Overall, she is highly proficient performer for this school year. These were written by school committee members, so some of the handwriting, I'm having a little trouble with, but it would be mine too. Ruth continues to be an asset to the district. Most of her, if not all of her goals, were met. You continue to fight for what's best for our students, staff, and community. We as a committee and Ruth need to continue to fight for full-day kindergarten. I am very grateful to have her in this district. Thank you, and congratulations to Ruth. So, as you can see, the committee seems to be very pleased with our superintendent. I want to thank all of you again for bringing this forward. If anyone has any questions about this, I have it. Michelle, I think we keep it in a file. And Michelle files it away. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Bob.
As we, the role of the superintendent has really changed over the years, and it's a lot different than it was probably 10, 15 years ago. And I think it's important to note that there's a lot that goes on at the superintendent level. Just dealing with budget alone has to probably be the most frustrating thing. Also, I think trying to add classes as a superintendent is probably very frustrating as well. But all in all, I think you've done a great job. And I understand your frustration because it's frustrating for me as a former educator to see us sort of stay in one place as opposed to trying to move forward. But I compliment you on, on your hard work.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to say that I know that we get beat up a lot with financial issues and cuts, and we're not doing enough. But I've, I've seen a lot of improvement in what's happening at the schools.
That's good to hear.
I mean, my, I've seen the science program hit the elementary schools, and my oldest did not have that program in the primary grades, and my youngest do. And, you know, they come home with their science projects. They're talking about science that never happened before, and neither of their parents have science background at all. So, this is all coming from the schools. The virtualization was a good example of improving the quality of instruction. I think that, I do view the, our curriculum coordinator, what do we call them?
Directors?
Directors, our band of specialists who go around. I see that, the inroads they're making into the elementary level, I think are going to be really positive. And so, academically, even though some class sizes are big, and certainly electives and languages are, we're hurting there, and music and fine arts. But I, the priority has always been the core academics in the district, you know. And I've seen improvement there. I think that that should be noted. Regardless of what's going on with cuts and money, there has been, I think, at the very core of what education is, improvement in the district, very recent improvement.
Just to go a little bit step further, as far as the curriculum directors go, when that first came up, I was a little skeptical as to how that was going to work, particularly at the elementary level where you're teaching four or five subjects, and you have four or five directors to come down. But I was glad to see that the directors sort of took the approach of you take science, I'll deal with language, so grade five will focus on this, grade four will focus on that. And I think that's good, and I agree with what Kevin had to say. The one thing I would like to add, however, is that it's nice to hear a secondary teacher say how difficult it was when they went down to the elementary school, and to see how much work the elementary teachers do, how much prep time they put into their, into their subject matter, and how that transition has seemed to really, to work very well. So, as a former elementary person, it's nice to see a director from the high school say, wow, I can't believe what goes on at the elementary level. So, I think it's-
And it's still a work in progress.
Right.
It really is. But I think it has been a really good thing for Whitman Hansen. And I think what has come of that is what you mentioned, just a tremendous respect from our people who were former department chairs, more or less secondary, for what happens at the elementary level.
Absolutely.
And also bringing that content in there. But in terms of class size, I think for most of our classes, as a result of measures that you took as a school committee just a year ago, our class sizes are quite good right now. And that's another progress that I think we've made. There are some electives, and also some specialist classes, particularly at Whitman Middle School, that are too big. But I think when it does come to core curriculums, particularly at the elementary, those class sizes are much better placed than they were several years ago. But largely, I do think doing our strategic plan has helped tremendously. As recently as Monday evening, when we talked about finances with both towns, we're charged with letting folks know what it is we need, what our budget's going to look like. We met to do, look at our action plans yesterday with our consultant, Lori Licas, and we all felt it would be very, not that difficult to be able to say, this is exactly what Whitman Hansen needs and what it will take to move forward. So, I think we're, that part of clarity has definitely improved over time. None of these goals could be accomplished without the work of the people around this table and the people we work with every day in the classrooms, leadership team, administrative team, everybody. We think in Whitman Hansen, we really do work together to make things happen. I think when we do become frustrated, and I'd recommend this to all, go to a classroom, talk to kids, talk to teachers, see what's going on. This year, had the pleasure of going through the schools with Chris Howard. We had a marvelous day together. I am willing and happy to do that with anyone because when you do that, all the work and all the frustration goes away. All you need to see is that child learning to read, or just the crazy comments they make, and it all makes sense. But that's where we are. Yep.
Go ahead.
I don't want to be the one to throw water in everyone's face. And I agree that we have made strides. But I do want to emphasize that there is still so much that we need and so much that we're lacking.
Very true.
Things are better, perhaps.
No, that's fair, Fred. I think specifically in the context of the superintendent's performance, that's what we're talking about now. We're not getting into budget right now.
I don't want someone that may be watching on TV saying, they're doing a great job. Everything's all well and rosy. They're improving. And I'm not saying that we're not, but there's so much more that we could be and should be doing. And I just wanted to make sure I emphasized that.
Okay. I probably work with the superintendent on a daily basis, and I speak with Ruth just about every day, in fact.
I would say it's sometimes more than once, right? Yep.
And having worked with mass association, school committees, and gone to many meetings, the average shelf life for a superintendent is between two and a half and three years. Right now, there are approximately in the state 60 intern superintendents in schools, right around there, Ruth. It runs.
Probably, yeah. I don't know what it is right now.
The superintendent's job has gotten much more difficult over the years. I've only really been here for two superintendents, one being Dr. McEwen and one being Ruth. And the difference I've seen in education and how education has changed in the last 15 years is unbelievably different. And the ability to have a change on the fly, and that's basically what you're doing. The superintendent's job years ago, and I looked into it, was much different than running this. It's like running a big business. You have to change on the fly, and you have to have the ability to change. And there's so many different problems, even Bob, than when you were in school. Socio and economical problems are a big, big part of this. So, when you're changing on the fly, and she's been doing that, and it's hard to do, I applaud what she does for that, and I think she does a good job. So, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
For what you do for Whitman Hansen Regional School District.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on. I was going to apologize to Maureen Mackenzie for not taking her out of order. She's sitting here diligently, and I know she's got stuff to do. So, I'm going to take her out of order, even though you're still in your area.
I think that's a great idea.
Come on up, Maureen. And I apologize, I should have, I'm looking and I'm going, why didn't I take her in the beginning like I did with Larnie and such? So, I apologize.
Good.
You should have spoke up.
Yes. No, I was glad to hear it all. I, I'm here again to talk about school lunch prices because of the 2010 Healthy Hunger Act for kids. I'm sure you've all heard- I'm sure you've all heard of it. If you don't know what it is, it's when they told us from the government exactly what we had to put on a plate, what we needed to offer, how many times a day, and what it will cost. Also, how it'll affect our budget. So we, they came up with a tool, which is what's in this packet, just a little picture of the tool, where you put in all your meal counts, and it tells you what you should be charging at that given time for your school lunch, breakfast, and healthy snack items. In the beginning of this year of 2017-18, we should be charging $3 in order to be in compliance. That is a mandated price for lunch, $1.50 for breakfast, and we're supposed to go up between 25 cents to 50 cents on a snack. And the reason why they're doing that is to encourage the children to eat more meals. That's what that's about. And anything I can explain, any questions? Because it's just what it is. It's the, it's the law, but if there's any questions on how we got there, I'd be happy to answer them.
What's the increase, Maureen?
The increase is going to be 25 cents across the board. So we're going from $2.75 to $3. It will affect, it'll affect a lot of families, and it may, may change our numbers again on our free and reduced forms, I'm not sure. But we are up, we're up six percent across the board in every school, so they are eating. So the program's working, and I'm not sure if a lot of you are aware of this, in breakfast, not only do we have to get fresh fruit and vegetables at lunch, we have to offer fresh fruit and vegetables at breakfast. So the kids walk away with little cups of little cherry tomatoes, because that's really the only vegetable they'll eat at breakfast. So when you're plating this for a lunch meal, it's with labor, it, the average lunch meal is $4.05 just to put on the plate. So this is why the government is now putting the prices up, so that they, so that you, they're not paying for every cent that's going on there.
Maureen, I have a, this isn't a question specifically about the increase. I see it all over the internet at different times about schools having, my child didn't get a lunch, my child, that does not happen here, am I correct? Can you just touch on that?
No. Any child that comes in the lunch line, whether they have funding or not, other than at the high school, it's a little different, will be fed a lunch meal. Now, at the high school, if they already owe us for four or five lunches, and they're that old at the high school, we turn them away, because they do know better. They're doing something else with their lunch money.
And there is a mechanism in effect of some sort to notify the parents, or?
Yeah, then the parent is then notified with a letter, an email, and if it gets to a certain point, a phone call by me.
So there's no gray area in this?
No gray area. We will not turn a child away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just want to commend Maureen. She had to go through, as you know, a food services review by the Department of Ed, not just one year, but two years in a row, has come out of those beautifully. The other thing that she's done as food services director is bring in many innovative programs. We now have breakfast in the classroom at Conley School, and in some classrooms at the Duval School, also offer breakfast across the board. At Whitman Middle School, she started wings. You want to tell them about what you do with that?
At both, at both middle schools.
Both middle schools, but Whitman Middle School has really taken off.
We now have what we call a wing and things bar, and they can basically pick what they want to have at that bar. They can walk up and mix a mini meatloaf with a chicken wing and have their vegetables and their salads with it, and choose whatever they want to drink. At the high school, we now have a choose your own sandwich, which they go into the bar, they pick their bread, they pick their cheese, they pick what they want on it, lettuce and tomato, and it's made fresh in front of them. We have something new, but I can't tell you, it's coming in September.
And a number of things are done to just encourage participation. They just recently did Crazy Hat Day.
Crazy Hat Day.
Which was just one of their many, many initiatives. But in addition to that, running a food services program is a huge challenge. Keeping it in the red is another huge challenge. Maureen does that very, very successfully. She is not allowed to carry debt over from one year to the next, and when you asked if she follows up, yes. And we have been, Whitman Hansen has just been, I think, acclaimed for being able to keep that debt lower than probably almost any other school system, but that's the diligence of Maureen and her department in doing that, so.
It's my staff, trust me, they're fabulous.
Well, you all worked, you have a good staff, and you all work together.
We do.
But I think we have an excellent program. We get monthly reports from her on how we're doing financially. And her little car is being fix, is fixed now?
Maxie is great. We have a car. She's an electric hybrid, and she delivers food to the different schools, and her name is Maxie, and she's all well. She's a little.
She was having trouble holding a charger, but she's got, she's better. It was indigestion of sorts.
She had indigestion because she needed her own charger.
Yep.
She didn't like going to public ones.
And fortunately, that was purchased, partially paid for by a green grant, and then the remainder paid by our taxpayers, so it's great.
So I would entertain a motion to raise the lunch from $2.75 to $3, which is a 25-cent increase.
So moved. Or would you perhaps prefer a motion to raise all items by 25 cents?
That's fine.
That's what you're seeking?
That's fine. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you very much.
And again, I apologize, I should have got you in the know.
No, it was good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to superintendent's report.
Christine's going to talk to us about where we are with the 1617 budget.
Okay, is, we'll start with the revenue, that's the one pager. So the first column shows you what we anticipate receiving in revenue. The second one is the transfers, which came later in July, after we got the actual state budget. There was some changes there. Then the third column shows you the actual anticipated revenue after those changes. The year-to-date expenditure shows you what we've already brought in through the end of May. The last column shows you the available budget, which is what we still anticipate receiving in June. The first one is the Medicaid reimbursement, that's a monthly reimbursement, so we anticipate a payment in June. Chapter 70, the same, just over $2 million. The charter school reimbursement, you can see, we anticipated receiving $78,728, and to date, we received $112,000. So we've actually received more than was anticipated from the state budget at the end of the year last year. Chapter 71 transportation reimbursement, received that twice a year. We've already received $337,682 and anticipate another $300,000 or so in June, the end of June. Homeless transportation reimbursement, we anticipated $30,000. That $17,140 was based on the prior year, but we received it after June 30th, so I have to book it in the, this current year. So still, we're hopeful to anticipate some more homeless transportation reimbursement by the end of June 30. If not, it will run into next fiscal year. The interest income, we anticipated $10,000. To date, we've brought in just over $42,000, so we're received over $32,000 more than we anticipated. Spoke with David Leary this morning, our treasurer. And the investment income, you know, on average, has been just over 1%. And in that particular account, the average daily balance is between five and a half and six and a half million, which this month in June will substantially go down because we have our balloon payment for our teachers next Wednesday, June 21st. They receive five payments, they have 26 payments for the year, but they, they get their lump sum payment in June. Does anyone have any questions? Oh, and the other one, I'm sorry, the circuit breaker, I've not, we, I've not made that transfer from our circuit breaker funds as of yet. We do, we, that is also another, that, it comes four times a year, and we, I, we anticipate another deposit at the end of June, June 30, or about June 30.
Keep in mind, this report is for 1718.
1617.
1617, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong line.
Yep, 1617, correct. And when I report out in August, when we come back in August, I'll have the closeout transfers as well as all of those reports updated. So much can happen in the next.
Any questions?
Any questions on the revenue piece?
We can event, though.
Yep.
What do we anticipate still to receive?
I don't know what we anticipate to receive. It, hopefully, at least the $12,000, but we might not receive it by June 30, because there's still, I talked to Desi two, two or three days ago, and they're still in the works determining how much funds there are to actually reimburse us.
So we're going to overspend that by quite a bit?
Yes, I, I'll get to that when we get to the expenditures. Yes, as a matter of fact, if you pick up your, the next several pages, at the top says year-to-date expenditure report, you might as well move right to that. If you look on page nine, almost to the very bottom, the McKinney Vento, which that, what the McKinney Vento asks is that we have to transport our homeless students, if, if they were currently enrolled here and they became homeless. It's our, the school district's obligation to pay for them to transport, depending on where they are living, to the, the school that they resided in before they became homeless. Currently, if you look to the far right where the available budget is, we've already overspent the, what we had budgeted by $51,000. So going back to the revenue, when we do our end-of-the-year report, we break out the homeless transportation, what the district has spent, and then we get reimbursed on that. Last year, I think it was about 30%.
And it's supposed to be reimbursed at 100%?
That is correct. Subject to appropriation.
Christine, how many students is that for the $80,000?
I think it's about just under 40 students.
Do you know, John?
Thirty, thirty-something was the last count, right?
And I, I didn't think it was that much.
Okay.
Part of the problem is the distance at which they're coming from, and the rates are changed by, by the distance.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I don't think it's the volume of kids, but I think distance is.
Right, but, I mean.
And the other thing that's happened as well is that if students are in foster care, we're also responsible, and the way the legislation works is it's supposed to be a combination of DCF district, and we also encourage Title I funding for it, but that's coming down the road as well. So today, Ellen Pat and I were at South Shore Superintendence, and Jeff Wolfson, who's the deputy commissioner, spoke about McKinney Vento as well as all other transportation, and it was very clear that just student transportation in general is a gigantic concern that needs to be addressed. Special education transportation, which is separate from McKinney Vento, is not reimbursed, and it's expensive. We've talked a lot about mandated, non-mandated, not getting reimbursed for Chapter 71, that's part of it. You see the homeless piece, which are, which Suzanne Bump, the state auditor, said was an unfunded mandate, but it's still not funded, and we talked to him about that today, I think, more or less just to make sure folks don't forget, we need to talk about that. The other issue is when it comes to just regular transportation, there aren't many vendors. So when you even go out to bid for a transportation company at the size we are, there are not many competitors. It's a big issue, and McKinney Vento is, is a piece of it.
The last two bids that we have for transportation, we only had one bidder, and that was for a student. We might have had more than one vendor pull the bid specifications, but only one vendor ultimately.
And I think what happens with homeless, sometimes if you have a single child who's homeless at a far distance, a vendor is not going to take a single van for an hour, two hours for a single student. So we're getting a lot of vendors who turn us away for a job for a homeless student, because they are so far away and it's a single student.
We've had it cost close to $300 a day to transport one student.
Christine, when you run $51,000 in the negative because you, we've budgeted $45,000, where's the 51 come from?
Well, that's why we call it a budget, and there's some areas that we'll, we'll see some savings that will, at, in August, when I bring you the transfers, once we close out the year, I'll have a really much better understanding of where we're going to see some of the savings that will offset that.
So if you went $300,000 over in your budget, what I'm getting at is that's what the E and D is for.
Correct. Correct, you can use.
You just spent $51,000 more than we budgeted, and the budget is right to zero, so if you had no savings, you would be hitting E and D for $51,000.
That's correct.
Same as if we had an issue for $300,000, it would come out of E and D, and that's why the E and D is there, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And while we're on the subject of E and D, that I also will have an estimate for you in August, but will, it won't be certified until October. Typically, since I've been here the last few years, we've seen significant savings in health insurance, which I can tell you today, we will not be seeing that significant savings, which has typically been between $200,000 and $300,000 this year. We're going to be within $10,000 in that, in the health insurance line, for a couple reasons. The last few years, a lot of the kids were under 26, they were still under their parents. Some of them have since turned 26. We've had a lot of babies born this year, and we've also had a lot of marriages this year, so a lot of the plans that were single plans became family plans, right, Pat? And a lot of the staff here turned 26 this year, so they have to go out on their own plan.
So it changes.
It changes, right. And that, with also having the increase of 15%, that also plays a factor as well. The other thing that's going to play a factor in this year's turnbacks is we've had a lot of unanticipated retirements in the last few months or even few weeks, that when they leave here, they get their sick leave buyout, so that is not taken into consideration here either. So those are the main factors of why you're not going to see the significant, significant amount put back into E and T like we've seen in prior years.
And that was after we waived the notice requirement, right? Is that?
We only picked up one with that, didn't we? After we said the notice of July 1st, in terms of retirements, was there just the one?
We got one.
We got one.
Okay.
But there were some others that were just late, later ones.
Some other ones, yes.
Yep.
So they weren't anticipated?
They weren't anticipated. And they, they have to tell us by a year, so people are telling us now for next year, so we didn't know that when we were planning FY18. It just seems that this year, there's been a lot more, since January even, that we're responsible to give them their sick leave buyback, so.
Any questions about the 1617 budget? Thank you. Thank you, Christine. Ruth?
I think I'm all set.
Okay. Old business, FY1718. Christine?
Okay. Well, I think I brought this to your attention last school committee meeting, looking at the Ways and Means budget for the charter school sending tuition. This seems to be quite an increase from the governor's first budget, budget proposal to the House proposal, close to $200,000. But they also, the charter school reimbursement seems to be up 50,000, so it's really a net of 150,000. We're just going to have to wait and see till when the actual budget comes out, which probably will be sometime in July, so I'll report out to you in August if there's any change there.
Any other significant changes in the 1718?
Those are really the only two that really jump out. We're getting, we're maybe getting a little bit more in Chapter 70, and regional school transportation is going to be flat, so.
Questions, anyone? Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. Driver education fees in your packet, the proposal to increase driver education fees. The current program is $595. The proposed increase is to 645, which is a $50 increase. The road test appointment current program fee is $95. The proposed increase is to 125. The last time there was a fee increase was in 2009. If you look down further, it's sort of puts us in line, keeps us cheaper than some of the other ones. Got a local that are private, and it's sort of, it gives our students a little bit of an edge. Silver Lake appears to be a little cheaper, and Ducksbury High School driving in Ducksbury is. is, will be forty-five dollars cheaper if the increase is voted. Is there any question?
Cheryl Wyndham is the director of our driver ed program. She wanted to be here tonight to talk to herself, but she was unable to make it. These cars last between two and three years, because they get worn down and beat up, so the last time that we've bought cars, she's actually been able to buy them under ten thousand dollars and be able to buy them directly out of her revolving account, not have to go. So that's one of the main reasons that she wants potentially have you increase, vote to increase this, is so she knows that one of the cars she's going to be needing to replace, probably over the summer, if not in the fall, so.
And again, the last fee increase was in two thousand and nine. The increase would be fifty dollars on the complete program and thirty dollars on the road test appointment. I entertain a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
You have a question. How many students are involved in the driver ed program?
Well, she just had another program for the summer. I think she can take up to between twenty and twenty-five students, but the driving time is all over the place. That goes on, all year, and then I would say probably sixty to sixty-five percent actually do the road test appointment through us.
It says, this says here that it's based on a hundred and ten a year, so.
Right.
In the total program.
Right.
Roughly.
So it's about twenty to twenty-five in each session.
Okay.
Yep.
Fred?
Do we accept students from other?
Yes.
So it's not just the Whitman Hansen program?
There's other students that are accepted as well.
I entertain a mo-
Totally self-sufficient.
We have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Acceptance of gifts. Michelle, I've got one that you sent me. That one's still good. This is from Patricia Poria Collins. There's a donation for preschool. A donation of one thousand dollars has been made to the preschool program by the Sandra E. Kelleher Memorial. The funds will be used to support development of a preschool science center that will be available to all preschool teachers within the program. I am requesting the funds be accepted by the Whitman Hansen Regional School District for this purpose.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
I'll be pointing the packet to you.
I was reading it from my iPad. The next one is dear school committee members, the Duval School PTO has generously donated twenty-five walkie-talkies at the cost of forty-eight hundred dollars to the school, so we may distribute them through the building, resulting in increased security. Respectfully, I request from the Whitman Hansen Regional School District Committee to accept this gift. Julie McKillop, principal.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Don't have any field trips? Subcommittee reports? Facilities?
Yeah, we met earlier this evening. I'll give a brief overview. You heard most of the discussion did center around the field. Ernie is going to be emailing district staff for requests for any work needed in their rooms over the summer. That's going out tomorrow with the link, so that it'll be very easy for them to complete a work order. The department completed, as of this time, a total of one thousand two hundred and seventy-two work orders with the new work order system, compared to last year's work orders at this time under the old system, they completed eight hundred and thirty-five. So the new work order system is working. They are, with our capital improvements, everything is still in its infancy, from the towns being generous to us, but we're waiting for return quotes and proposals for most of the projects. The cleaning of the buildings will go on as scheduled. Ernie works with SJ Services, and they will be cleaning, shampooing, doing windows, et cetera, and shining things up for the upcoming school year in September or end of August. Pretty much the normal maintenance, so to speak. And that's pretty much about it.
Fred, just a quick mention to the facility subcommittee and to the school committee, for all of you that were here at graduation or saw this building looked fabulous. Not that it doesn't all the time, but it looked really, really good that particular night. We got a lot of comments from people in town saying the building was in good shape. They couldn't believe it's twelve years old, it's almost hard to believe myself, but.
How did the ticketing system work?
The ticketing system worked out, worked out. There was a few glitches, as there is when you change anything, but it seemed to work out.
Better than anticipated.
People seemed, yeah, people seemed to like it, so it's a good move. Okay, negotiation subcommittee. I know they haven't met yet, but I can briefly tell you that Ruth was having a meeting with them.
Pat and I met with Beth and Kevin today, actually.
Okay, and, well, actually, go ahead.
And we talked about negotiations, and they're more than willing to do ground rules, get that up and running, and begin meeting at the end of August.
And I happened to come in to it before that meeting.
Right.
About a week ago, and Kevin and Beth were there, and I mentioned to them that we'd like to get started early if possible, and they're going to work on trying to do that. I believe the drop dead date is October.
Fifteenth, I believe, yeah.
Fifteenth, but we're going to try to get it done before that and get this underway. They wanted to know if the committee would be okay having us just go over the ground rules in a smaller group. Ground rules don't change much. I know it's Bob, Fred, Dan, Mike, Chris, and myself. Are you guys all right if we just meet with them?
As long as there's a representative, other than yourself, as long as there's another representative present, that's fine.
Yeah, we can all meet, but I mean, it's a ten or fifteen minute thing.
Yeah, I don't mind the ground rules, as long as there's someone else there that.
Yeah.
Right, and they met recently too, and their organization was comfortable with just representatives meeting for ground rules.
The ground rules are the basics.
Ground rules take ten or fifteen minutes.
They're not going to have the whole team, that wasn't my understanding, that they trust that that will get done well, and it's not a problem.
Okay. All right, policy subcommittee?
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, sir.
I'm going back to negotiations. I would think that if our negotiation subcommittee could meet before the first formal meeting, so that we can all sit down and discuss.
We were talking about doing a meeting in August.
Okay.
Somewhere in between. The next school committee meeting's in August, so I was talking about getting everyone together, just to make sure we could go over it. Maybe the beginning of it, we'll notify you.
Okay.
Of when, and see if it's amicable to everybody, and we can quickly go over the ground rules then. You know, I don't anticipate it being more than a fifteen to twenty-minute, half an hour meeting.
Yeah, just, you know, what are the ground rules, and also, you know, perhaps we can set goals and objectives.
Okay. Great. I have no issue with that. Everybody okay with it? Mr. Boyce isn't here, so there'll be no pilgrim. Legislative representatives, Mike?
Yeah, nothing. Today, the fair share amendment passed today, and it'll be voting on the ballot in November, which is interesting. Other than that, nothing major.
Any questions for Mike? And I believe that's it, the subcommittees. Did I miss anybody? Just before we adjourn, this is an interesting tidbit. If I can get it back. Today, a report come out ranking the hundred best places to buy a home in Massachusetts. Whitman ranked number five, Hanson ranked number eight.
There you go.
Yeah. Number one was Jefferson County City in Worcester.
The demographics of that report are, they don't take schools into consideration.
No.
They think about both taxes.
Yeah, pretty much. Pretty much, it's.
But it was, it was interesting. Home income to ratio value, five-year population forecast, and a five-year forecast score, so, but it was interesting. An entertaining motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you all.
Eight twenty-four.
Have a great summer.